Thank you very much. With that, with the meeting called to order, the first thing we'll do is ask for a roll call, please.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Narayan.
Here.
Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Garminia.
Present.
Commissioner Keong.
Present.
Chair Strader.
Present.
And you have a quorum of seven.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you to all the commissioners for your presence. The first order of business, I would like to have a move, a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th. They were sent out earlier either late last week or early this week, depending on your mail service when you received them.
So moved Bradley.
Second Anderson.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Anderson, moved by Commissioner Bradley, call for vote.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Narayan.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Garminia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes without present voting aye.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for that action. Before we start, a couple of things, housekeeping, I want to put into play here. One is that we do have four action items on the agenda. There will be a public hearing. If you are on for the public hearing, at any point, I will ask that you please place your name in the chat. We will identify you appropriately at the time. We typically ask all those that speak to maintain your time at two minutes or so. I will, I will marshal that time and that process appropriately. Please be respectful at all times and of all comments and concerns, support or issues and timing again. So we'll call for that at the appropriate time. The second thing I ask, I beg for forgiveness from Commissioner Kelly Anderson. It was on my notes last week to introduce him as one of our new commissioners. I did not take that, Kelly. Please, Commissioner Anderson, please understand I have notes written, but don't read, don't read them all the time. So welcome. He is here on behalf of the comptroller's office as I designate and welcome. Any words that you'd like to offer at this time, Commissioner Anderson?
I'll know where it's about last week, but thank you and I'm happy to be here and happy to serve.
Very good. Thank you for that. And again, I never take it for granted that commissioners serve as volunteers on their time because most of you, the clock stops at five and it continues to go for most of us in this position. So I'm grateful for your time and the citizens of St. Louis are very grateful for that also. As I mentioned, there are four items we'll be using. The first one will be brought to us by Miriam and then I will call for the the public meeting at the appropriate time. This is PDA 15504 CMP and Miriam is at the podium and in place. So I will now defer to you, Miriam.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Miriam Keller, City Planning Executive for General Planning and Design at the Planning and Urban Design Agency, and I'll be presenting the proposed Sloop Amendment number 23 this evening. Next slide. Yeah, thank you. So just to introduce what we'll be covering with this item. So this is a presentation about proposed amendments to the Strategic Land Use Plan, which we refer to as the Sloop for short. And as many of you know, know well, this is the land use component of the city's comprehensive plan. So tonight I'll be presenting an overview of the amendment and then we'll be holding a public hearing as Chair Strader mentioned. And as he mentioned, if you intend on making any comments, please sign up in the chat. And I will note for the record that notice for this public hearing was provided in two publications, the City Journal and the St. Louis Daily Record on February 7. And similarly, PDA's document with background information, which commissioners also received in their packet, was also posted on PDA's website and has been available since February 7. So following the public hearing this evening, the Planning Commission has the opportunity to vote on whether to approve the amendment. Next slide. So the map shown here is the very latest and greatest adoption, adopted version of the Sloop, which was updated and adopted on February 3rd, 2021. Every block in the city on this map is designated with one of the 10 land use categories listed to the right on this slide. I will describe each of these in a bit of detail as they come up during the presentation. And as you know, the Strategic Land Use Plan is a policy document that designates the desired future land uses for locations across the city at roughly a city block level with some exceptions, I'll describe as we go. Next slide. The Sloop was initially created and adopted first in 2005 and has been updated more than 20 times since then. Amendments in short, what they do is they change the loops or location sloop designation from one category to another. There are many types of amendments and what I have listed here on the slide are three examples of amendments that have come before the Planning Commission in the past several years. We have amendments that reflect kind of incremental development progress, so kind of changing conditions on the ground as well as action items previously approved by the Planning Commission since the last general update. So items such as redevelopment plans, rezonings that have used the adjacency rule. This is the amendment before or the type of amendment before you tonight. We refer to these sometimes as annual amendments because they're something we do periodically just to bring the sloop up to date. Discussing tonight. These two other kinds of changes are other examples of amendments. So there might be an amendment to recommend a change in vision for large underutilized sites such as Cortex or NGA. That's another example. There might be amendments to reflect changes proposed by neighborhood plans. And as we do more neighborhood planning, more of those types of amendments will be before the commission, but tonight is really just that first kind of update to the sloop type of amendment. Next slide. This table shows the nine proposed loop changes included in this proposed amendment. And as you can see in this table, the first four aim to simply reflect previous planning commission action, typically involving the use of the adjacency rule. And the following five on this table are updates to reflect development that has occurred since the last general update. So to reflect changing conditions on the ground in this loop map itself. So I will provide in my presentation, just a brief overview of each of these nine proposed loop changes. Next slide. Here we are with the first in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood on Swan and Taylor avenues. In 2020, the Planning Commission approved a blighting study and redevelopment plan for this location, finding proposed development here to be consistent with the sloop through use of the adjacency rule, designated the site as specialty mixed use area. So this designation, which you can see proposed on the bottom right part of the slide, is for special dynamic areas where it's intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. Next slide. As you can see on the right there, significant progress has been made on this project. The development includes over 300 apartments, over 1,400 square feet of commercial space, structured parking and various infrastructure improvements. And so, yeah, again, updating the sloop here would be to reflect that previous planning commission action. Next slide. The second site is in the Soulard neighborhood in the 1501 South 7th Street area. Here in 2020, the Planning Commission approved first a blighting study and redevelopment plan, then a rezoning request at the site. Next slide. This mixed use development, the Soho, as it's called, is nearing completion and has about 300 apartments, commercial space and parking. So here again, the previous approval of the blighting study and redevelopment plan and rezoning requests drew on the adjacency rule to support the designation of the site as a proposed loop change. Next slide. So the third site is in Gravoy Park, where the Planning Commission approved a blighting study and redevelopment plan for this location as well as rezoning request, again, drawing on the adjacency rule. This project converted the site from an institutional use to a multifamily dwelling using an adjacency rule to indicate this area as especially mixed use area in that change. Next slide. Here are some pictures of the school building and adjacent site in the block context and the adjacent development down the street there in the bottom left image. So this proposed amendment is actually an example of a redesignation to reflect the change of use from an institutional to a non-institutional use. Updates are also proposed when institutional owners sell to non-institutional owners and you'll see a couple of those updates proposed in later items. Next slide. This fourth site is in the Bevo Mill neighborhood where the Planning Commission previously approved a blighting study and redevelopment plan using the adjacency rule for the development of a large scale development with room for retail on the first floor. Here, the proposed sloop designation was regional commercial area, which again, using the adjacency rule to indicate its context immediately, you know, adjacent to and really surrounded by that same designation. Next slide. So here's an image of the before conditions on the site. You can see a street view as well as the conditions from an aerial view. Construction here has begun, but really at this time grading and excavation. Next slide. So with the fifth item, we are now moving into proposed changes mainly with the intention to reflect incremental development progress that has occurred as well as changes in institutional ownership, which I mentioned a few, a few items ago. So this fifth site in the Academy neighborhood is where a former school building was converted into housing, the Clark School Lofts. So here, the adjacency rule is used to identify the appropriate designation reflecting the preservation of this new residential use. Oh, next slide. Here you can see a picture of the Clark School Building now renovated as lofts. It's a really beautiful building. Slide. The sixth site is an area in the Gate District that also falls within the St. Louis Midtown 353 Redevelopment Plan, which was approved by the Planning Commission in 2017. That plan identifies these blocks shown here as what's called an action area for new residential housing. Additionally, the sites are no longer owned by an institution and are rather part of the UIC Homes project that is underway. Next slide. This slide shows a little selection from that 353 plan. I should, I should have said also adopted or passed by ordinance by the Board of Aldermen in 2017, showing that Action Area 12 on the map as well as the description of this area with its proposed future use. I know that's small text, but those are items from that 353 plan. The proposed update here would reflect the change in ownership and also make the future land use designation on the sloop consistent with the non-institutional future land use of housing. And this project is underway. Next slide. The seventh location is in the Cheltenham neighborhood where a site formerly designated as an opportunity area has since become a Starbucks. So no longer an opportunity, it has been developed. Next slide. So this new designation of delete, can you go back a slide? Sorry, of neighborhood commercial area. Thank you. Next slide. Would reflect that development progress shown here. You see a before image from 2017 and then the after image here with a Starbucks currently in place. Next slide. The eighth location is in the Clayton Tam neighborhood where a former school building previously designated as an opportunity area has since been converted into housing. The Grashut or Gratio, I apologize for my pronunciation, certain to be possibly incorrect, but apartments in this former school building. Next slide. And again, some kind of before and after images of that conversion. It's another beautiful building. Next slide. So this ninth and final site is the location of the Kalina Housing Development in the Hill. Previously designated a neighborhood development area on the left, which is a designation we use to indicate areas with a great deal of vacancy where redevelopment in a neighborhood context is envisioned. And the proposed loop, next slide, reflects all of the progress that has occurred on the site. And since the majority of this development is complete, as shown here, the proposal tonight is to update that designation to a neighborhood preservation area indicating that the intent to preserve this current use that is now in place. Next slide. So with that, that completes my summary of these nine proposed loop changes and I will turn it back to the chair as we enter into the public hearing.
Thank you, Miriam, very much. Great presentation. As I asked at the onset, if you're interested in making comment, the only way we're going to be able to recognize you is if you place your name in the chat and I will appropriately identify you at that time. So if you're interested prior to me opening the public hearing, please begin doing so. With that, the publication was done appropriately in time. I think she said the date was to February 7th appropriately. So with that, I will call for the, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing from the commissioners?
So moved Alderman Cone. Second Narayan.
It's been moved by Alderman Cone, seconded by Alderman Narayan. Call for vote.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Narayan.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Garminia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes without present voting aye.
With that, we are currently in the public hearing. I am calling at this time for any comments that want to be made. I'll identify you appropriately. I am not seeing any names in the chat, so I'll call once for any names for public hearing. We ask that you, if you make comments, they'd be limited to at max two minutes. Call number two for public hearing. I see no names at this time. Call number three for a public hearing. I see no names at this time. I'll question the staff to be sure, ensure that we're not, I'm not missing any identification of public hearing.
We are also seeing no, nobody seeking to participate.
With that, then I will entertain a motion for close of public hearing.
So moved. From Commissioner Keong.
Second Bradley.
I have a move by Commissioner Khan, second by Commissioner Bradley.
Previous role.
Call for previous role, hearing no objections. No objections, public hearing is now closed at that point. I will always, as I do at this point, question the commissioners for any questions, beginning with Alderman Cone. Any questions? Hearing now from Commissioner Cone. At this time, we'll come back. Alderman Narayan.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boaz. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Garminia.
Are we on section, are we on item number three?
We are, we are still on 15504 CMP.
Okay, yes, no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Keong.
No questions. Thank you.
With that, there are no questions for commissioners. At this point, I would ask, is there any further comment that needs to be made by the staff prior to calling for question, any, any further comment?
I don't believe there is. I'm looking at Miriam. She's covered this quite completely. During the executive director's report, we're going to talk a little bit about moving forward with the comprehensive plan.
If that, I think that's Don. If you can open your mic or move to a mic we're in, if we can, you sound like the Charlie Brown teacher.
He's bringing a mic that'll pick him up.
This one's live and I may be dead because I, I just wanted to mention, we, we do this for a variety of reasons, of course. But at the executive director's report, we're going to talk a little bit about the Strategic Land Use Plan, which is a land use component of the city's comprehensive plan and a legal document and some steps moving forward regarding keeping that current. So I'll save it for then.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, Miriam, if you would read the recommendation.
Yeah, so the recommendation and request of action here tonight is that the Planning Commission, I apologize for this typo, adopts and approves amendment number 23 of the Strategic Land Use Plan or Sloop of the Comprehensive Plan for general sloop changes located throughout the city as listed in Exhibit A of the resolution and inclusive of all prior amendments.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion from the commissioners.
So moved Narayan. Second Cone.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Narayan, seconded by Commissioner. Call for previous role, hearing any objections? Hearing no objections passes from previous role. Thank you very much on that. Miriam, we will be coming back to you, I think, in a little bit. The second action item on here is a rezoning in public hearing, which will include a public hearing. Again, I ask if you have a comment or you will want to engage in the public hearing, please place your name in the chat. We'll identify you at the appropriate time. This presentation will be made by staff member Jonathan. So with that, Jonathan, I turn it over to you.
Good evening, Chair, and thank you. And good evening to all the members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jonathan Roper. I am a, a, excuse me. Sorry about that. Good evening. I'm Jonathan Roper as City Planning Executive with the, of Neighborhood Planning with the Cities Planning and Urban Design Agency. And this evening I have the pleasure of bringing you a rezoning, a request for a rezoning. This is a continuance from a public hearing from the last meeting on February 8th. And so we continue to hear about a request for a rezoning from J Industrial District to H Area Commercial District for two parcels in the Cascoosco neighborhood, addressed as 1506 South 7th Street and 1525 through 29 South Broadway. Next slide, please. Right now, staff will just give a little bit of an overview of the project and then we'll go again back into the public hearing, if so, the chair chooses. But the previous commission, I'll first start with the overview of just the site and, or the general planning area as a whole. So I'll just take us to the previous planning commission actions. The, the red you see on the screen, there is a larger rezoning of the I District, which is happens to be south of Highway 6440. Also in the blue or the green, just to the right of that, there is a large area that was the Gateway South Redevelopment Plan, which the Planning Commission passed actually just recently, which called for more advanced, not only manufacturing industrial, but also entertainment, mixed uses, housing, residential, retail and all that. And also there is the rezoning of 1501 South 7th Street, which is just to the immediate west of the subject zoning site, which also the Planning Commission just chose to amend the sloop category just earlier. Next slide, please. Also, this is one of the new slides that the commission didn't see before, but just also in looking at the context of the area from two perspectives, one being 7th Street and the other being Broadway. So the yellow highlights, this is looking from west to east. The subject site's almost in the middle of the screen, kind of highlighted there in yellow. You can see the Mississippi on top. So on the yellow side, there's 7th Street, which looks at a number of different uses. And on the top, that's Broadway in the blue. And I'll kind of just highlight some of the uses, starting from left to right. We really started hard to downtown with Kiner Plaza, City Garden. Of course, you have Busch Stadium, the Couples Stadium area, Weston Hotel. You have a number of restaurant and bars, a school, brewery. You have the subject site, of course, and then the other recent apartment building is one we just mentioned earlier that, and historic Soulard Market, more restaurants and harbor even. And on the north side, of course, you have again, you could see starting around the arch, you could see, you know, Busch Stadium, the Ballpark Village, more restaurant and bars, you know, BB Jazz and Broadway Oyster Bar, a new distillery, more restaurants and bars and even Live for Life School. So that's all happening on the streets. The two parcels, if you recall, are off 150, 1507, or I'm sorry, 06, 7, South 7th Street and the other one's off Broadway. So this is all happening in the context of Broadway. Next slide, please. And then looking at what's happening, naming, you know, a number of entertainment spots, what we're now, you know, Busch Stadium. What the strategic plan, land use plan currently has for the area is a business industrial preservation area. Also, just note on the bottom right of the screen, that's from, should be a little bit familiar as you just saw it earlier when Miriam presented the sloop update that was adopted for a specialty mixed use area. So staff is finding at this time that specialty mixed use area where it looks like areas like downtown, where there's a bunch of mix of uses that they're preserved and developed. We're looking at this site, if you can go back one, Scott. We're looking at the site where it's adjacent to not only the apartments right next to it, but also a number of items, entertainment items that is in a walkable distance from this site. The site really, as you can see, the blue line and the yellow lines kind of converge on the site is really like the entrance to off of downtown into Soulard and into the Cascoosco area. So this site, kind of been looking at it, next slide. As should it be business industrial preservation area or should it be land use visioned of something more or something specialty, specialty that would go along with the historic Soulard Market. Next slide. And looking at the underlying zoning, which is what we're considering today, the underlying zoning today is J Industrial zoning, industrialistic, and this allows for uses, I'll just go back before between the J and the K's, or I'm sorry, the J and the H, which is the zoning that is being requested at this time. The J Industrial District, it does permit things like auto uses, like auto sales and leasing, auto repairs, body shop, car wash, open storage. So a number of open storage that can be just out in the open because, you know, it's an industrial. Also industrial types of manufacturing, mattress manufacturer, a number of types that could be permitted by right. But staff brings this up because if we look around, going back to the previous slides, you see a number of land uses, including that new apartment complex that looks just to the west or on the left side of screen here. That was rezoned by the commission from a J to a G district. Also, it was under a redevelopment plan as well, recommended for approval for a redevelopment plan. So on leveraging those types of investments that the city has made and looking at what is more appropriate for right across the street that makes 7th Street whole. Next slide, please. And there are some land uses that are permitted. We want to take a look at the difference between, again, J, what, what is permitted under J and what is conditional under H. So under J today, there'd be some, there are some items that are permitted. Under H, they might be permitted as well, but they give a little bit more, they're under, they're, they give a little bit more control as they're permitted by condition. So things like convenience stores are permitted outright in J today versus being a conditional use, which there are above and beyond regulations or conditions, if you would, upon the basis of approval for that. So funeral parlors, used appliance stores, used furniture shops, those will all be conditional uses under H versus just outright permitted under J. Biggest outside of the industrial and manufacturing uses that are permitted under J, H really goes into what, what's the, it's a very mixed use environment where it looks at residential, it looks at commercial and those complementary uses and mixing those together. So under, what J does not allow for is residential, except in the case So under, what J does not allow for is residential, except in the case if residential or exists up to a certain point. And this, the case on the block, and then it only looks at the block. So in this case, on the block, that block does not contain residential today, blocks 367 to be rezoned. Therefore, under J, residential would not be allowed. So that's where the H Area Commercial District zoning, which would allow for a lot of different commercial uses under certain conditions, but more multi-family and higher dense as well. Next slide, please. At this time, I'd like to just toy around aside a little bit. I know you guys saw this last week, but we'll just go quickly through the site, starting with the subject site. This is the one of the two current users. So one is a Broadway, or it's a leasing and rentals for commercial vehicles, which is permitted, permitted use in J today. And the other is a, it's a service, or I'm sorry, it's a office, but also an office that controls rescue services and also safety operations for different businesses that choose to use their services. So both, I know the car leasing and rental would not be permitted in H, but they would be permitted in J. But the petitioner tonight, today, which is the owner of that place, is the petitioner who's looking for to develop the multi-use family. So that's the current use, which will be grandfathered in under H. However, that is the owner as well who is seeking the petition. Next slide, please. And this is across the street from the site. This site here is also owned by the petitioner. It's Zone K, and it also would, this site would have the parking garage for the multi-family on the subject site. This is not being requested for rezoning because a parking garage is a permitted use in that area. Next slide. And this is just south of the site where you have assortment of different businesses. Next slide. And south and southwest, where you see the historic Sulard Farmers Market and also restaurants. And you get to see another, in the last couple of years, recently renovated apartment building in the far, next slide. This is, of course, is just to the west and south as well, which is that apartment unit. So you could see the Soha's you saw earlier with the, under the sloop amendment. You could see that this is almost nearing construction, but on the right side, so on the left, the big left picture, on the right side, that's the current subject site. So what this and rezoning this site from a J, which is what you're going to see, what you're going to get kind of today, you can rezone it to H, see more multi-family. That would align, you know, a six, six-story building on the other side. You could see them, the arch right down Seventh Street. So you kind of align the street one side with multi-family, the other side multi-family, and you create this collection. Just a block that has more identity, multi-family, also with commercial. And it becomes a more, much more walkable environment. Next slide. And this is north of the site as well, this industrial site, next slide. At this time, if the petitioner is on, Mr. Phillips. I did not receive slides from him prior to, so.
Thank you, Jonathan. Prior to mentioning Mr. Dennis, again, if you, we will be opening the public hearing. If you are interested in doing so, please place your name in the chat. That would be the only appropriate way for us to identify you. At this time, we'll recognize Dennis Phillips, who is the petitioner for this, and allow him to make his presentation.
Yes, am I allowed to share the screen? I do have a few slides that I would like to show the commissioner. And thank you very much for the ability to do this too. And thank you to Jonathan. He did an excellent job there presenting it.
Hey, Dennis, would you mind emailing me those slides?
Ah, that's going to be a problem actually to do from where I'm at. I apologize for that. If I can't share the screen, I understand.
Yeah, I, as Chair, I would, I'm a little apprehensive with not allowing the screen share without previous visits. Visions of slides.
I understand that, and I do apologize for not getting them to you in a timely manner. I was working out, there's another 15 acres in North St. Louis that I'm buying, and I was working with Phil Holsey today on that and got tied up. So my apologies on that. Very quickly on this, I moved back to St. Louis five or six years ago. I bought this particular land and this business there way forward. The land that you saw, the Soho land I used to own, I sold that, have nothing to do with it anymore. I do want to develop this site to make it a mirrored image of what they built over there. I think they've done a very good job of it. Broadway Ford has moved up north in December of last year. I bought another nine acres up there and moved the entire company up there. So that land is actually sitting vacant right now. And I would love to develop this into the 300-plus apartments in it, a little bit of commercial space. Again, all we need is this section redone to the H from the J, as Jonathan so carefully explained. The other section of land, which I also own, would stay as it is and would be allowed to be the parking garage for the people that would be living in this. I did submit about half a dozen letters of other businesses in the area as per Mary Barton's recommendation that all support this business. In my journeys around there, I found no one in objection, you know, in any way to it. But I didn't visit all the businesses either. So I also talked to Greg, the CEO, who's running that south development area there that was also highlighted in an earlier screen, the 1.2 billion riverfront development. He's actually flying into town today. I'm going to meet with him tomorrow and make sure that we compare notes and make sure that we're doing things that match together on that. So trying to develop this, to me, it looks like an obvious improvement for the area, taking a vacant lot and putting 300-plus apartments in it. It's a matching for the area that's already been developed and has been permitted by the commission to put it up. It helps develop this area into a natural corridor running down to the arch. Helps in the density of the city, matches the other items that the city has been, excuse me, working on for the last number of years. So, and it's just another project that, in St. Louis, that I'm interested in developing. So very pleased with while St. Louis's progress in the last few years. Kudos to any of you guys that have helped to bring it along. We've got a ways to go, but there's an awful lot of area here that I think can make St. Louis really progress in the next decade. I hope I can be part of it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Phillips, thank you very much, and we appreciate that. At this time, because the public hearing had been actually opened in our last session, I, again, if you are wanting to make public hearing at this time, place your, your name in the chat. I'll make three synonymous calls. Again, if you're going to state, if you're going to make a comment, you will have two minutes at a time. Calling for public hearing one, I am not showing any names. Public hearing number two, not showing any names. Call number three, I'm not showing any names at this time. I will confer with the staff to ensure that I'm not missing any. Am I missing any at this point, Jonathan?
No, we are not.
Okay, with that, then, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move to Alderman Cohen.
Oh, do I hear a second?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Like, just to see real, I forgot to announce that the zoning staff is on, just in case I forgot to mention that they were on, in case they had anything to say, just like, sorry, I wanted to.
Yeah, I'll call for that after, after the public hearing. Having a motion on the floor from.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Alderman Cohen, seconded by Commissioner, I think that was Garmedia, call for vote.
Previous role.
I hear a call for previous role to close the hearing. Do I hear any objections? Hearing, no objections. The public hearing is closed at this time. I would entertain, ask the staff, is there anything that you would like to make prior to the commissioners are making or asking questions?
No.
Okay, all right. Then with that, I'll do my traditional question lineage. Alderman Cohen, any questions at this point from you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I think I have any questions. I'm still kind of, you know, listening and learning here. It sounds like it's a really exciting project, very familiar with that corridor and that, you know, particular piece of land over there. Nice to hear that they're thinking of doing something complimentary. I will say, I did add in the chat, the pronunciation of the neighborhood is Casiosco, Casiosco. So just in case anyone needs some familiarization with the pronunciation there, it is a tricky one in the city, for sure.
Thank you, Alderman Cohen. Alderman Norrian.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baoz.
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
No questions.
Commissioner Garmedia.
Yes, I do have some questions. So the planning department, quickly say, how many lanes of traffic there are on Seventh Street?
Can we go back to these?
Can you repeat your question? I'm not sure if they heard it clearly.
Yes, there, I'm sorry, I was getting an answer that was that, the question of how much, how much parking? Sorry, the travel lanes?
Yeah, how many lanes of traffic?
There's two each way plus parking on each side.
Okay, so it's six lanes basically, but two are for parking.
Yes.
I think this is a tricky parcel. And are we just doing questions for the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay.
Dennis, yes.
Does the petitioner have any strategies for navigating pedestrian access across Seventh Street?
We proposed to the planning committee building a pass overhead above the street to connect the two properties. They suggested that they would prefer to see foot traffic in that area since that street is so seldom used. The main traffic runs down Sixth, Seventh Street in the front of it, not in the backside of it. So we would be willing to put in a overhead walkway connecting the parking garage to the other one, if that's in the interest.
Over Broadway?
No, well.
Where's the, it's parking garage to the development you're proposing?
Correct. Yeah, it would be over Broadway, yes, not over Seventh Street.
Right, yeah. So strategies for having, you're imagining, we're imagining pedestrian, more pedestrian traffic, more foot traffic.
Yes.
And, you know, most of the residential-based assets are across Seventh. So, and one thing that's caught a lot of recent attention is how we have a lot of traffic violence in the city and how it's very unsafe for pedestrians. So I just wanted to hear from you if you thought of any strategies to, for residents of this proposed development to cross.
Actually, the first strategy that we tried to do is to see if they could vacate that end of the street there, which I didn't get any further in the discussions with the city. They said that ending it there was not something they would want to look at, even though it's seldom used. The problem with snowplows and everything like that, they'd like a continuous route through there or the entire street to be done. And I don't know that that would have been an option on that. We looked at that first, that not being a feasible option. We included in our original plan a walkway over the top. And then the planning commission suggested that perhaps it would be better to have it without that particular walkway, try and get more foot traffic down there because the street is very seldom used. I would love to see a traffic plan on that thing because it's very seldom used. Everybody uses Seventh Street, not Broadway there.
Yeah, I agree with that. I guess the other question I have for you, Mr. Phillips, is what's your, you talked, I don't know if I missed it, but I know you talked about the other properties you own in the area, but do you have any previous experience doing residential development?
Not residential, no. I've done a lot of commercial and everything, but I do not have experience in the residential. I'm winning heavily. There's probably a couple of architects on the call here that work for me and some others. But yes, I do not have any experience on the residential side.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair. Sorry, Jonathan. I could have a moment to correct, just because I believe the planning commission was referenced by the petitioner twice as being, have mentioned something about approval that you may have been referring to. This is the planning commission, so I just want to make sure.
More likely BPS.
More likely, it might have been people from the city or BPS, but it wasn't the planning commission as this is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, in one of the meetings, they referenced, we actually had the walkway up there, and they said it, you might look at not putting the walkway there. We like to encourage street traffic and walk, pedestrian foot traffic there. So again, I'm open to any plans the city might recommend for connecting these two.
Right, no, they were correcting the, the organization or entity in which you.
Oh, okay, okay.
They were referencing, this is the planning commission, and they're saying it's probably Board of Public Service in which you had that conversation with, not with the planning commission. With that, Commissioner Kang, any questions?
Before I ask any questions or if I have any, I didn't know if Alderman Cohen wanted to ask a follow-up question to Commissioner Garmentia.
I will, I will recognize Alderman Cohen at appropriate time. Yes.
Um, no, I, I'm always thankful to the planning department and all the information they pulled together and shared. So appreciate that. It's always helpful in contextualizing it. I also think it's good that this is going from a J to an H to allow residential use. So that's always really exciting to hear as well. Sorry, Dennis, I forgot your name for a second. I would be curious to just ask a general question in terms of your vision for if this building does go forward for residential use. I do need to ask if you're thinking about any affordable housing units and what that may look like.
We've looked into that, yes. And again, with the developments that have been going on in Sulard, especially across the street and some of the others there in the near neighborhood, we just want to match and make sure that our rents are appropriate. And if we need to do affordable housing in a percentage of it, I will definitely look at that.
I would encourage it and ask that you do look into that. And we know that Sulard, of course, has a growing population and that sometimes younger individuals live there or early families. So I think affordable housing is always good to consider. But as of now, no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Alderman Cohen, I'll come back to your question now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. I was just wanting to wanting to make sure that I understood the connectivity, so there was a bridge that you were planning on putting, like a pedestrian bridge, or what type of bridge were you planning on putting in here?
There is a, in the original plans, there's pedestrian bridge on it, yes. The second plans that we drew up eliminated that pedestrian bridge. That's easy to put back in. You know, I'm looking for feedback from other people and what they think the most, you know, the best use of this land would be.
Yeah, I mean, I would fully agree with, if it was BPS or Street Department or whomever you spoke with, you know, pedestrian bridge, I don't believe is a really good fit, you know, as we're trying to address traffic calming and other measures on the city. You know, the more pedestrian traffic that we can generate on our streets, the safer that they can become and the more attention that we can draw towards, you know, human activity that's on our corridors here. So appreciate the right vision there. And then just following up on Commissioner Garmentia's questions about the like residential experience with residential development. You mentioned that you have architects on the phone. Do you have property management firm that you're planning on working with? I mean, it's one thing to build these. Are you going to sell it as soon as you build it? Or, you know, how do you plan on, because, I mean, 300 units, that's a lot of complaints that's going to be rolling in your way. You know, how, how are you planning on managing it?
Yeah, that's one of the discussions I had today with Phil Holsey, who has had more experience in this and such, and we were trying to decide. I will probably bring in a developer to work with me on this. I haven't decided who yet. It may or may not be Green Street. I'm not so sure who. I'm also talking to Greg tomorrow too, to see what, what he has in the plans there. But no, I will not be managing this myself. I will definitely be bringing in a management group to take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioners. As the Chair, I do want to echo Commissioner Kang's statements. I'm very adamant about affordable housing at this point, especially in this community. Again, we get to the number of businesses that were shown in bars and restaurants that. Again, we get to the number of businesses that were shown in bars and restaurants, uh, that we, if we're getting to a fifteen-minute city, uh, this is one of those areas that we have to be very cognizant of, uh, that, and you're saying three hundred units, so that would be, you know, livable rate, livable ranges at this point, you're talking about anywhere between seven hundred and ninety dollars to a thousand dollars a month rate, uh, rates for a affordable housing in this area. So I want to be sure that this is something not just looked at, but highly considered.
Absolutely.
Uh, I think it's only critical that we continue to do that. Uh, with that, I have no more further questions. I'd see, and I think Jay, uh, Alderman Cone's questions have been answered.
They have.
He has your hands still up, so. Uh, with that, I, I would ask Jonathan, if you want to recup, uh, uh, re- repeat the recommended action.
Yes, Chair. Uh, the proposed, staff finds that the proposed zoning request is in conformity with the strategic land use plan by J and C rule, and PDF staff, uh, recommends approval of the proposed rezon from, um, J Industrial to H Area Commercial District.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
So moved, Alderman Cone.
It's been moved, Alderman Cone. Do I have a second?
Second from Kang.
It's been moved, Alderman Cone, second by Commissioner Kang, call for vote.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Garmendia.
Um, I'm going to have a no vote, and I just want to say it's not because they don't support the development of this particular site, but I think this kind of issue should be taken up in the strategic land use planning process and not uh, of case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Commissioner Kang.
Aye.
Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes with six ayes and one nay.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, do we, I think it's Don or John.
Don, I'm not touching anything for my own safety. Uh, but thank you for that whole, whole discussion. One thing that I was reminded of is we were, we were hearing from the, the applicant, um, that the the other people that are joining us on the call would be the zoning departments on the call. And Rich Bradley is the President of the Board of Public Service, has a seat on the planning commission for a very specific reason. One is to, to have these linkages back to things that might have been further discussion before the Board of Public Service in some aspect of this, and to hear it here, and sort of do some of those melding together, that's important. And of course, uh, Scott Ogilvy, uh, who worked closely with Board of Public Service as part of PDA staff, is here tonight because he runs the technical part of this, so I wanted to make that note. The other note I want to make is that we have now concluded the last of the public hearings for tonight. So there are still two more action items, uh, but there are no further public hearings tonight.
That is correct. Thank you, thank you, Don. Uh, with that, the next item is, welcome back to the podium, Miriam.
Thank you.
Hey, we better have some brevity in this thing.
Yeah, yeah, glad to be back at the podium. Uh, yeah, good evening again, um, Mr. Chair and other members of the commission. So I am back here to present uh, this third action item, which is the request, excuse me, request for the planning commission review of a preservation board demolition decision regarding seven buildings on South Kings Highway. Next slide. So, because this type of item does not as frequently come before the planning commission the way that rezonings or redevelopment plans may, going to take a moment to kind of provide an overview of the procedure involved here, uh, before we get kind of back to the subject of this request for review. Um, after I provide that overview, um, Meg Lustow, who's the Director of the Cultural Resources Office, will also provide more information on the subject of the demolition decision around which the review is being requested. So, um, by ordinance, an applicant may request that the planning commission review a preservation board decision regarding demolitions. And this review is actually a two-step process by ordinance. The first step being simply whether to undertake the review that's being requested. And the second step is conducting the review itself. And as I've noted on the slide, we are simply at the first step this evening, and it's at the planning commission's sole discretion whether to take up this review and whether to move on to that second step. And I'll say, at this first step, we don't typically go into a lot of detail. That, that would come at the second step, really getting into the full record that was before the preservation board, should the planning commission decide to take up the review. Here we are at, at step one. Uh, next slide. So that being said, I do want to provide a bit of information about what that second step looks like, should the commission choose to take it up. We would assemble the full detailed record that was before the preservation board, including the transcript of the preservation board meeting, public comment and testimony, reports, the staff report, as well as the applicant's presentation. So basically, everything that happened at the preservation board, and that would be the heavy lift of review, that second step. The parameters for that review are determining the correctness of the preservation board's decision in light of the applicable standard for the proposed demolition. And at the second stage, the planning commission would have three options uh, in that review. Number one, whether to affirm the preservation, preservation board's decision, whether to reverse the preservation board's decision or modify it. Um, importantly, at this stage, uh, just so everybody knows, kind of, to be clear and what to expect, should you choose to take it up, is that all, all that can be sitter, that can be considered is the record that was before the preservation board. So no new evidence, either written or oral, may be submitted at that time. Um, and, uh, just, just to clarify that if the planning commission upholds the preservation board's decision to deny the demolition application at that stage, the applicant, uh, would have the opportunity to go to court. And tonight, if the planning commission decides not to take it up, um, so would also, uh, yeah, the applicant would have the opportunity to go to court. Next slide. So here is the subject of the request for review. The seven buildings in the Forest Park Southeast, which lie both within a preservation review district and within the Forest Park Southeast National Register Historic District. And so at this stage, like I mentioned, uh, we don't tend to go into great detail. But Meg Lustow, who's the Cultural Resources Office Director, is here with us, uh, virtually, to provide a bit more information, um, about these buildings under consideration and about um, the preservation board's decision.
Thank you, Miriam. Good evening, uh, planning commissioners. My name is Meg Lustow, I'm the Director of the Cultural Resources Office. I'm just going to go through the PowerPoint that I presented at the December fifth meeting of the preservation board. If we could go to the next slide. Next, please. Or. And the next one. So this is a, um, a site map showing exactly where the properties are at the intersection of Oakland and South Kings Highway. You can see that there are seven individual parcels within the proposed development site, and as Mary mentioned, our jurisdiction is because both they are in a, um, National Register Historic District of the Forest Park Southeast, and they are also in a preservation review district, which gives us jurisdiction over demolitions and subsequent new construction. Next slide, please. Um, this is an aerial view showing the seven parcels in greater context. Next, please. And I'll just show you, I'm going to go through a series of photographs showing the individual buildings as well as the context, so we can just scroll through. This is a view from Oakland approaching, looking west, next. Uh, a view looking northeast. Next. Uh, this is ten seventy Kings Highway, that's the northernmost parcel, next. Ten seventy-four, next. Ten seventy-six, next. Ten eighty, next. Ten eighty-four, next. Ten eighty-six. Ten, ten ninety-two, ninety-four, next. Um, this is just a little bit closer view of the, um, of the buildings. Um, again, this is ten seventy, this is from the rear. I think this is the next section where we have some photographs in the rears of the buildings, taken from the alley, next. Ten seventy-four from the rear, ten seventy-six, South Kings Highway, next. Ten eighty, South Kings Highway. Next, ten eighty-four, next. Ten eighty-six, next. And ten ninety-two, ninety-four, next. We then have a, just a view from the alley, next. Here's some context shots, this is standing on the sidewalk in front, looking, um, towards the interstate, goes northwest, next. Uh, looking north on Kings Highway, next. Looking south, the subject properties are on the left, next. And looking, uh, this is context, north on Kings Highway, next. Um, this is the opposite, opposite, I guess a little bit southwest of the properties along Kings Highway, next. And there's the Oakland Avenue gates, which are immediately south of the subject properties, next. Um, I'm now going to show you, uh, the renderings that were submitted to us for review. Um, they're submitted by the applicants and the appellant's. Uh, we'll, as we go through them, make a couple of notes, but if we can just continue, this is the southwest elevations, this is what you would see from South Kings Highway, next. Um, also, uh, looking at it from Kings Highway, but northwest elevation, next. I will get back to the slide, but I will note that what, uh, what you're seeing here was later changed, next. Um, this is the rear elevation, looking northeast, next. And the west elevations, this is what you would see from Kings Highway, uh, next. Additional elevations, if we can go through these and get to the site plan. Next. Material slide and, and the site plan. Um, and this is, and we may go back to some other slides, I just wanted to point out that, I mentioned that the plans that I just showed you is what our office reviewed. Um, about an hour before we were required to post the preservation board agenda and staff report, we received revisions to the plans that we were not able to evaluate in time, and we're not able to amend our staff report, and they did include a major change to the plans, and that was the relocation of the vehicular entrances, which you can see here at, um, E and F, uh, have the cars coming in and out of the parking garage along Kings Highway. The revised plans that we received reoriented that entrance to the alley behind, um, the building. And, uh, I did address that change in my spoken remarks at the preservation board meeting, but we got the information too late to incorporate that into our written staff report. And you can go back to, if you can just page back to one of the elevations. Keep going. Yes, right here. So you can see, yes, on the right and the left, um, you can see the garage doors, that was, um, the plans as we originally reviewed them, but again, those plans were changed by the applicant. And I addressed that in the spoken remarks at the December fifth preservation board meeting, and the applicant did as well. That's my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much at this point. Uh, again, I will be, as Miriam comes forward, again, remind the commission, we have one of two options. One is to either hear or not hear, is to undertake the review. Uh, and then the second, the second option at that time would be to uh, conduct a review. So right now, we're really concerned if, we're really considering if we're going to undertake the review. Uh, Miriam, I'll turn it back over to you at this point to have a further conversation.
Thank you. At, yeah, at this time, I think we are ready to take planning commission questions and for discussion.
All right, is there?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Don, is there, I was going to ask, is there anything from the staff before I get to the Commissioners' questions?
I think I'll listen to the questions and
Okay.
Bring in commentary as needed.
All right, thank you very much. With that, uh, the first person will always be Alderman Cone, whose hand is already up.
Thank you. Um, so can, can you all just elaborate further for um, those that are participating, because I know there's a lot of interest from the community, uh, with respect to the hearing, um, in the event that we do not take up review, what, what does that mean? What are the next steps for the, um, appellant? Uh, what are the next steps potentially for the community? Can you, uh, just elaborate, like, what happens if we don't take it up for review versus, you know, I think we all know the next step that we do take it up for.
Certainly. So there's an infrequency over the twenty years for us doing this, but we've done it, uh, several times. And the it, we need to be careful, there's sometimes the use, the word of appeal. And really what it is, is that the preservation board has acted on this demolition, and that demolition is, or act, action has stayed for a period of time. Where the, uh, applicant and the receiver of the preservation board's decision, uh, can then ask, and this is a technical term, for the planning commission to review. So, that, what they've done, they've done that within a required time period. And then we have a required time period to get to this stage, which is decide whether we're taking up that review or not. And why I say that in particular, because really, uh, why Meg showed you just the briefness of where we are and what it is that would be doing, meaning the geography, the applicant, uh, applicant rules, uh, and a little taste of what's being demolished and what's being proposed, is that you would in essence stand in, uh, at the next stage, which has no defined clock to, uh, performing it, um, as the preservation board, and hear the record and, uh, see the visuals, uh, from, uh, the preservation board decision and action. The, uh, point that we are, where we say whether we're going to take it up tonight, meaning do that process, and the process, uh, Miriam defined what happens or can happen at that. Uh, both is, at this point, if we were to say no, and at that later point, we're proposed to say no. Then as an item, final item from the city, uh, they could and would be entitled to appeal to Circuit Court. Um, and do, uh, what they might do in terms of those filings, and the city would participate in that. Uh, we've had several over the years. Uh, we have one that's still in process, having been, uh, in the process going to Circuit Court, then Supreme Court, then back to Circuit Court, can be a lengthy, lengthy process, it's the court process. The second thing, as with demolitions, is an applicant that files for demolition and gets a determination, uh, can refile and re, and request the demolition permit again after a year's, uh, interval between the first application, which is what this was based, and making that second one. So there is the court path, if we say no, and there's the path of using that time, uh, maybe even working with the neighborhood, um, and others, uh, to prepare, uh, an, another, uh, demolition application. So those are many of the big picture aspects to this. Of course, the neighborhood has been quite involved in this and been very concerned about it. Uh, and, uh, I, I'll leave it at that for the moment, in case there's any more questions or comments, but, um.
Thank, any more, Alderman Cone? Alderman and Ryan, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, Alderman Ryan.
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ald, uh, Commissioner Boaz.
Nope.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bradley.
Am I correct that Alderwoman Peel is against this as well of her, as her constituents? The building of this, um, the demolition and, and building of the new facility, is that correct?
I will say this because I do listen to the community, uh, and, uh, you would find out in the detail of those if we took it up. But yes, there is opposition from the neighborhood and the Alderman person.
No further questions, thank you, Don.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson. Hearing no questions from Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Gormedia?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Kang?
No questions, just want to thank Meg and the Historic Preservation Board for a thorough review, it was helpful. No questions, just want to thank Meg and the Historic Preservation Board for a thorough review, it was helpful context reading through the materials.
Thank you very much, with that, I have a question really from Miriam, do you have the official statement made by the Preservation Board?
Let's see, not here in the presentation, but in your packet, as an exhibit to the resolution we provided, is the Preservation Board's decision letter.
Yeah, so in the materials to this stage, there is the, a very brief resolution from the Planning Commission, which I'll make another notation about in a moment. And the visual PowerPoint to give you a lay of the land and what was subject. The Preservation Board finding, and then as we said, that finding gets received by the applicant. And in this case, they picked up and, and wrote a letter requesting within the proper timeframe and hand-delivering it to us, to have us take this up. And we are taking it up, meaning decide whether we're going to do the review here tonight. I would add that there is not a printed recommendation in the staff report from us to you. But in many aspects, as I described, clocks are relevant, court processes have certain amount of time. We are not defined by any time here and us moving forward, and there is the option of there being a new application for building permit, excuse me, for demolition permit after the expiration of one year. And the court process is one that applicant can judge to do and what the timeframe would be that. I would really, in the context of all of this and the work, I would recommend that we not take it up at this, do not to take it up.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate that, at this point, and I will defer to the commissioners. The action that we're requesting, either we, we do undertake it or we do not. There's not a motion, there's a, you can make an open motion at this time, and I'll entertain that motion.
I move that we do not take this up at this time, Narayan.
It's been moved by Alderman Narayan that we do not take this up at this point, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Gormedia. Any inter readiness? Hearing no unreadiness, I will call for a vote, please.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Narayan?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Gormedia?
Aye.
Commissioner Keong?
Aye.
Judge Strather?
Aye.
And the motion to not take it up is, all present voting aye.
Okay, and with that, again, as Don reminded us, does that mean that the pitcher does not have alternative action items to take? It just means that we will not review it at this time, and they have other options if they choose to do that at that point. With that, we have one other additional item, and I see Maria's still at the podium, so Miriam, you, you keep going.
All right, yes, thank you. Just one more item tonight, as you mentioned, and this is a fairly light one. So this item is an administrative item identified by PDA staff, and this relates to a section of code that provides the Preservation Board authority, next slide, please. And here, there are some key words, if granted prior written approval by the Planning Commission to make recommendations to the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Public Service regarding, you know, just in general, the terminology is public structures and monuments. And here on this slide, I've cited the relevant sections of the code we're referring to. Next slide. So in that code, you'll, you'll find a description of the scope of what would be reviewed with this authority, so buildings, bridges, lampposts, and so on. Previously, the Preservation Board had not explicitly been granted this review authority by the Plan and Commission. Rather, the Cultural Resources Office staff was providing that review and its recommendations on these items when that feedback was requested. Next slide. However, a kind of recent review of this ordinance by Cultural Resources Office staff identified that getting this formal authority from you all, from the Planning Commission, would simply kind of help to clarify the procedure for this review, both within the Preservation Board itself and with Cultural Resources Office staff. So basically, what's before you tonight is sort of an opportunity to clarify and tighten up the procedures on this item. So, with that, our comments and recommendation are as follows on the slide. To explicitly grant the Preservation Board authority to provide to the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Public Service recommendations regarding public structures and monuments, as outlined in the ordinance, that the Preservation Board may determine an appropriate procedure or policy for providing review and recommendations, and also that all prior review of this kind be ratified.
Okay.
I don't know how we can have more fun tonight than this one.
Yeah, with that, I will, I will open the questions for any commissioner, I won't go through the role of any commissioners if you have any questions on this.
Narayan, here I have a question, is, was there any specific monument or, or or public structure that, that brought about this, this conversation?
Meg, is you still on?
Yeah, yes, I'm here, um, yeah, we were asked to review some, some polls in a, one of the scared of Oliver neighborhoods, and we engaged in a much deeper examination of the various ordinances, which are sometimes overlapping and sometimes a little confusing, and discovered that this was an area where we could really use some clarity, as Miriam said, so that's the reason for the request before you.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out if I'm inadvertently stumbling into a Confederate monuments conversation or something like that.
Oh boy, no.
We've been there, done that, you're not.
Okay, beautiful, all right, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Any other commissioners? I recognize Alderman Cone first and then come back to Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, so is this just for items that are in the public domain or public right-of-way? Or does this also apply to private property?
It's only for, for items that are in the public right-of-way.
Okay, and then is it only areas that are like in preservation areas or historic districts, or is it just citywide?
Citywide.
Okay, okay. I'm glad that we added the term arches to the definition, you know, we're kind of known for one.
If we go back a couple, it may. Yep, we, we added. I suppose.
Yes, Commissioner Bradley?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things here. So, as the President of the Board of Public Service, I would like to point out a couple of things about this that concern me. First of all, over the years, we, my office, which is extremely understaffed, has done reviews with the Cultural Resources Office for over 35 years. And the idea of that is, it's been a relatively seamless, quick, informal process of reviewing things that otherwise may be mundane. So, what I would like you to consider is the language that is in Ordinance 64689, Section 51, which is what this is referring to, where it talks about every bridge, every building, every lamppost, every tablet, every statue, every fence, every monument, and so on, as well as the location, design, and decoration thereof. And so, my concern with this is, is that every single project that we put out of this office, if we pass this, will have to go to the Preservation Board, and as the wording says, it's 45 days from submission. And the last time that I checked, I get calls 18 times a day from Aldermen wanting to speed up their projects and get them out as quickly as they possibly can, and in my opinion, this is going to tremendously slow that process down. If that's what we all decide, one needs to undergo part of this. I also have concerns in, in Section 51 and 52 of Ordinance 64689, that there's language about approval mixed in with recommendation, it's all over the board. It's not just that clear that it's a recommendation, there's conversation about approval from the Preservation Board. The other thing that concerns me about this item is, is there was an art ordinance authored in 2012, and it is Ordinance 68793, which gives under Section 6, the authority of recommendation of approval of public art to the regional arts council as our regional expert. And they recommend to the Board of Public Service whether or not a particular type of public art, a monument, a thing of that nature is to be done, is reasonable, they recommend the artist, they recommend maintenance programs and so forth. And so I have brought this up on multiple occasions, even back when Dan Krasnoff was the Cultural Resources Director, that there are overlapping ordinances that conflict with each other. And that something probably needs to be done to clarify this. And so what we always did was, is following the public art ordinance, we would go through that with cultural resources and explain to them, you know, what the proposal was, and I've never really had any pushback on that. I mean, I, I personally feel this is going to tremendously slow this process down by the fact that every project will have to go to the Preservation Board, every set of plans for every project, perform a review. That's all I have.
So let me intervene, because we've, Rich, we've forgotten to tell you the second step that happens after tonight. Is the way it was structured to get the permission was for the Planning Commission to make this reference back to the Preservation Board. And what we forgot to say is then the Preservation Board will delegate the authority directly back to Cultural Resources Staff, as it has been in the, the existing time period between this, but not formally ratified here. So that you'll be able to continue to work directly with the staff, because we will have authorized the Preservation Board to fix that issue. They will then direct the staff that they work directly with you, as they have been, and that it's become legitimized.
Okay, that, that's a great answer, and I'm good with that, but there's still a conflict between the two ordinances as far as 64689 and 68793 for public art. So, somewhere along the line, that also needs to be understood, because again, if this winds up being a Preservation Board approval, RAC has a whole series of process and procedure that they've authored that we work very closely with them on. And if they are cut out of that process, I believe that will be a, a lot of heartburn for them and us, quite frankly, as they're our regional expert on art.
And as you know, one of the most tremendous things that have happened in terms of public art is along the Gateway Mall, and one of those, it was the Frankie Freeman statue. And that was very much handled by RAC. And if I would, to make something as a recommendation tonight, I, I would say we should approve the, the instructions back to the Preservation Board, so they can instruct the that they'll give permission to the staff to work as diligently and quickly as they always have been, and have that legit. And take up your recommendation that we should take another look at the public art and all its interplay and make sure we get that right, but that may mean something that we come back to, to the board with.
Any further questions or comments, Commissioner Bradley?
No further ques, questions or comments.
Okay, any other commissioners with comments or questions?
Yes, I, well, I'm still trying to follow the current procedure versus what we're codifying and how how a piece of public art infrastructure gets, comes to the attention of the Planning Commission, Preservation Board, Board of Public Service, is it only when there's like development happening, or what's the, how does this process begin?
Meg?
The Board of Public Service sends items to our office. Okay, so this is codifying that.
In essence, yes.
Yes, and then it would be up to the Preservation Board to delegate that task to the Cultural Resources Staff.
There's been a gap in, in completing that authorization for many years, so.
Okay. And so, does a, can a citizen, like a resident go to the Board of Public Service, service and say this piece of public infrastructure, art infrastructure is falling into district fair, can we make the owner maintain it, is that, or is it, everything, all we're talking about are things that the city owns?
So, I can answer that, Don, if you'd like me to.
Please, please.
Thank you, so Christina, it works like this, so an organization typically, or a person like Judge Mason, who did the Freedom Suit statue in Civil Courts Plaza, come to the Board of Public Service with a plan to install public art for one reason or another, Don referenced Frankie Freeman, David Francis is in Francis Park, I, I could go on and on and on, as well as the city owns a number of pieces of art itself. And so, they come in and they ask for permission to install this in a park, or in a mall, or on a sidewalk, or whatever the case may be. And so, before we do anything with it, we send it to RAC, and RAC reviews it, and they say, first of all, what is the proposed piece of artwork that they want to install? Does it, you know, do anything for the community, is it, you know, something positive, is it historical, is it reminiscent of something? And then if they find that it is positive, they work with the proposer to approve an artist for it. Then they review plans for us to look at the actual sculpture or installation and tell us again whether it's proper, correct, whatever. And then they also work with the proposer to say, are you donating this to the city? Or do you plan to have a maintenance program that you fund and you maintain that statue, or whatever it is, into perpetuity? And so, we have really gotten away from this donation to the city because we have very limited resources to maintain our statues.
Okay.
For example, in Washington Square, Le Cleed stands there, Le Cleed has not been properly cleaned for 50 years, right? So, we try to stay away, because we don't have the funds for it, so we try to make sure that a maintenance plan is in place, and it goes through that process, once that's all recommended by RAC, you know, if it's in a park, the Parks Department weighs in, if it's on a street, the Street Department weighs in, everybody weighs in. Before we do a final approval through the Board of Public Service, we touch base with Cultural Resources, and we say, this is where we are, is there anything that we missed, or is there any problem or issue? And they give us the thumbs up, and then the Board of Public Service approves it.
And which I might add a comment, is that is the lane of public art and the creativity of the artist and getting that all weighed and thanking RAC to help organize that. In everyday life, Rich, there are certain things that may be from city-maintained fences to light poles that need that circulation to Cultural Resources that, for them to review and approve, that has not been properly formalized until what we're proposing tonight, have it be those routine things and generally in city ownership. it be those routine things, and generally in city ownership that get circulated, that they can take it up and get you back an expedient answer on those type of things.
Okay, and that makes sense if, you know, Board of Public Service is the lead on this because they have to maintain it. So that makes sense to me. And I guess the piece I'm curious about that's not listed here, so this only applies to when it's being erected or installed, basically the proposal date. What, and it doesn't have to be part of this recommended change, the ordinance, but I'm just wondering, like, for, after that, after the, you know, it's been erected and installed, like things that were installed and erected 100 years ago, like what is the procedure for elevating those? What's the procedure for, you know, if, if Board of Public Services, we don't have the money to take care of this, what's the process for maybe soliciting someone else to volunteer to take care of it? So these are just all scenarios that I'm just, that this brings up for me that don't bear on this particular decision, but thanks so much for answering all my questions.
Commissioner Keong?
Um, this is going back to the exchange that Rich and Don were having. I was trying to follow, and I don't know if I fully followed it. Rich, are you satisfied with the language that's in here towards BPS, or were you asking for any edits?
No, I'm satisfied with Don's explanation, because what Don basically said was that by pushing this through, Preservation will delegate the responsibilities to the Cultural Resources Office, which is exactly who we work with today. My concern was that if it has to go to a board that meets on a monthly basis, every set of plans that we put out, which is a lot, and then they're given 45 days to respond, there will be a lot of unhappy people about timing. You know, we get beat up now about bureaucracy. I'm always concerned with adding time to processes, and I hope the two Aldermen on the call will appreciate that, because constituents of theirs do not understand bureaucratic processes that take a lot of time.
Yeah. And so the, the, the process we're doing now is that expedient, get it over to Cultural Resources as a staff, you know, maybe a little timing to get to it and send it back with a comment. We're found some glitches in that really being the consummated properly. So tonight, we're trying to get that consummated in the two steps that's as instructive as how to do it. Planning Commission back to the Preservation Board, saying they're giving the approval, and as Rich said, then they will give it to Cultural Resources. So not everything is supposed to go to the Preservation Board. It's delegated to staff.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those questions. With that, Miriam, can you go back over the recommend, recommended language and proposal?
Uh, yes. So our recommendation, which, as I restate the recommendation, maybe I'll also restate kind of the summary of the discussion I hear, that these recommendations are with the intention that the Preservation Board delegate this review to Cultural Resources Office Staff in a manner that allows for expedient review and collaboration with the Board of Public Service.
If I could have rented a billboard, I would have had a billboard behind my head that said that earlier in the presentation, so.
Thank you, Don. Well, we'll erect a statue on your behalf, or a public artwork with that.
Let me go on a diet first, please.
Can I just ask one last question?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Autumn and Colin.
So is this a resolution to send to the Board of Aldermen to codify this, or is this just a kind of resolution of understanding between departments?
This is the Planning Commission, if this were to pass, this communication would be from the Planning Commission to the Preservation Board, granting them that formal written approval to establish a procedure and policy for delegation and so on.
We don't have to update the ordinance?
That's right. We're referring to ordinances in here, so I would think that we have to update an ordinance, which would require Board of Aldermen approval and support.
So Meg, if you would make the further comment as to whether the ordinance already provides for this delegation, but the delegation had not occurred?
Um, the ordinance allows, and I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but does allow the Preservation Board to come up with a policy. So that's what I'm hearing the Planning Commission say, is they want to delegate this to the Preservation Board with the recommendation that the Preservation Board come up with a policy to delegate this task to the Cultural Resources Staff, which is how we've handled it for.
And Meg, why is it going to the Planning Commission in the first place?
Because that's what the ordinance says.
Duh-dang. So the ordinance says have the Planning Commission make some, some judgments and recommendations back to the Preservation Board, and then the Preservation Board will do that to the staff, and then the staff will serve and help BPS in this capacity.
Excellent. Thanks.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Autumn and Colin.
Second, Keong.
It's been moved by Autumn and Colin, second by Commissioner Keong. Call for vote.
Autumn and Colin?
Aye.
Autumn and Norion?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Gomindia?
Aye.
Commissioner Keong?
Aye.
Judge Rother?
Abstain. Did we miss Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, he's been gone for two votes.
We believe he's been able to participate, but he does not have an active mic at the moment.
Okay, very good. Okay. With that, then, the vote is?
The, yes, the motion passes with six voting aye and one abstention.
Okay, very good. With that, there are no other action items. Don, executive, any reports that you want to make at this time?
Two. One is, Rich and I would both appreciate if we start seeking artists to make our statues when we both finally retire. And gee, I thought that was gonna be funny, but anyway. The executive director's report, I want to bring up an important thing. This week, very, very hard work has gone over the last two weeks preparing a request for proposals, meeting up for the consulting world. And we will be meeting with the formal selection committee later this week. The, the proposal is, as we talked about the sloop, is the sloop was, was, you know, planning and urban design was created in 1999. One of our first actions after the year 2000 was to do and have a consultant do the strategic land use plan. It had the word strategic in it, but we've been adopting it as a component of the city's general plan or comprehensive plan under state law, because we need one. We, I'll say, we're fuzzy about having something that legally filled that role prior to putting the strategic land use plan together. So the strategic land use plan is what it is. You see it in the simple 10 categories. We survived a, one, a very vigorous lawsuit about whether the city had such, such an item. And we were teased a little bit about the name, so we often add some more words to the name to the sloop. That's indeed true. We do these annual things, like we said tonight, in part to make sure there's actions that help us keep it current and legally and defensible. There are some things that are, that are somewhat result of a lawsuit that was affecting things nationally 20 years ago regarding that some parcels individually are labeled as institutional uses. There are things that have become a good time to tire kick after about 20 years. So we're engaging RFP for a consultant to sort of do a top to down, top to bottom, look at us using this model as the strategic land use plans, land use component of the city's general plan, a comprehensive plan. I just played lawyer there. And we'll engage a consultant to do that. They will be looking at some other things as authorized under state law. Of course, is, there's other chapters that can be. The, the primary two things that are legal documents are the strategic land use plan and the zoning plan, the zoning map. Zoning is something that we do and wrestle with every day. The zoning office certainly has to do all the walk-in traffic, making changes to it have come incrementally. There's probably a list of things that we all know would like to make changes. But with the strategic land use plan, we'll be looking at the roots of the strategic land use plan, and what I'm saying we're open to is adding things that are other chapters that could be allowed. We saw, say this is the component of the strategic land use plan, that's the land use component. There might be an equity component. There might be some other things from the tire kicking we're about to do that we would then consummate as part of the general plan for the city. And when it's part of the general plan for the city, things that come before us that need to be found in compliance with the general plan or comprehensive plan, almost interchangeable words. It would be measured against the map of proposed and aspirational land uses. It would be measured about, against these other chapters, some of which we'll have about, would have about transportation. We do have on our map now the light rail, proposed light rail routes. And then there might be, therefore, also chapters dealing with strategies relating to equity and that type of thing, that would then become part of the official adopted, adopted plan, and it stays in place until it's changed. So just heads up that we're thinking in that way. We're using some funding from EcoDevo in the most part for working on this, and we appreciate the members of the E&amp;A that have sent delegates, which includes Christina and, and Grace, to participate in this election process. And looking forward to many, many months of work and a pretty large price tag, so FYI.
Thanks, Don. Really quick from the chairman's seat, we're gonna play Don Bingo next week and say, next meeting, see how many times he can say "plan" in one, in one conversation. The second thing, as we leave, I just want to be sure we congratulate St. Louis City Soccer on their inaugural win in their, in their stadium. It was great to see that, and the Battle Hawks and their win. But lastly, today is International Women's Day, so we are very supportive of that and embracing equity. And as we, can't invite you to the table because you were importing, you know, welcoming you to the table, you were important in building it. So we will celebrate women and all they do in all of your places. So enjoy this month as we celebrate Women's Day. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved, and it's been moved a second. Wish everyone the best, best week, and may it all be positive for you. Thank you very much for your participation in this meeting and great discussion. Have a great week.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your service, for being the chairman. Thank you.